I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting has been properly posted in all the normal posting places. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion on second. On favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we're on to student showcase. Do you want us to go out here?
Yeah, that would be awesome. If you want to turn over.
Film here.
For the studio audience, this is Ms. Lindsay Bachman. She's one of our first grade teachers. And she's done some wonderful things with Mrs. Sibronski using V-Box. And the kids, of course, will steal the show, so pay attention, or they'll be a test following.
So, like Mr. Bitter said, I'm Lindsay Bachman. I'm a teacher in first grade. And we have been using V-Box. This is brand new to first grade, brand new to our school. And our first graders have been really great at using them. So before I got asked to do this presentation, I asked a couple of my kids, hey, what is a V-Bot? What do you think it is? And I just thought it was interesting to see their perspective. A little girl said it's a bee and it's a bot and it has buttons on it. Another little one said it's something that you can code and it goes where you want it to go. And it's something that you can program to go places. So, where did the V-Box come from? Mary wants he wrote a grant, a PPG, and we got a grant for a thousand dollars. And that bought six V-Boots, the charging station, storage case, and six card mats that you see in front. And these card mats, we've been using for multiple different math skills. We've been using them for clocks and coins, numbers to three hundred, true or false statements and sight words. We've also used them for measuring. And we also have a social studies unit coming up. And we're going to be using that kind of as a map and driving them to different places. So, what I have tonight for you all, yeah, we have five first graders that would like to show the school members kind of how the V-Boots work. So, I don't know if you guys want to turn around and just kind of introduce yourself? Just say your names.
Maddie.
Helen.
April.
Sydney.
Okay. And they have their very own map. And underneath that, they have clocks. And we've been working on clocks to the hour and clocks to the half an hour. And so, each will get a V-Bot. Looks like this. Turn it on. Get that to you. And then, how it kind of works is I tell them to drive their V-Bot to a specific time. And then, they have to program the V-Bot to go to that time. So there's arrows on the top to turn left, turn right, or go straight. So I don't know if you guys want to come up and match up with a little one? All right. So, the first task that they have to do is they have to find the clock. So I'll say, drag your V-Bot to seven o'clock. So first thing they have to do is they have to find seven. And then they have to figure out, okay, how am I going to drive it? All right, there you go. There you go. Have a different starting spot. There you go, man. Oh, good job. Okay, so if you want to drive it to, um, eight thirty.
Yep.
Good job. Did you find it up front? Ooh, close.
Oh.
Do you go down?
Oh, that's good.
Good job. Let's do one more for everyone. Let's go to nine o'clock. Efron, what happens if you put in the wrong code? What can you do? How do you reset it? Oh, George, show him that.
It is probably effective. You need to stretch your finger to make it that way down and get here because you want to make more interesting. There, so it's going to be more interesting.
Cool.
Hey, get you there. Okay. Right. Everybody reset.
What do you think, Eva?
Right. All right, now I'm going to get a real handy gear. Two, three. We're going to turn. There it is. There. Wait until we do that right now. So if we missed across the square, we need to make sure.
Do you want to set it further?
Why didn't you give me the call there? No, it's called.
How about seven o'clock?
We were late. Jumping up and down. All right, first graders. Thank you so much for demonstrating the V-Boots and showing how we use them in class. So make sure you take that V-Bot and you turn it off. And then let's collect the clocks and put them back in the little basement.
Mr. Spender. We're going to take your V-Bot.
Good job.
Now we'll clean up. Is it great?
Oh, my gosh. What else have we used?
Can you sort those by pink and blue, Mr. Spender?
One of three is seven. And then we're exactly around the four. Coins, like driving to sixteen cents or driving to, um, sight words. Yes. So we have six stamps. And, um, we have, um, yup.
And?
We have one in here. We have a brand new class as well. Thank you so much.
So Kados, don't get dressed yet. We've got a little stuff before you. So, guys, why do you guys like using the V-Box compared to just doing it on paper? Why do we like the V-Box so much? What's different about it? Go ahead, Ephraim. Instead of just writing it down, we get to program. And one of the things that we're going to continue to do with Mrs. Sibronski helping us out with is we start by very basic programming. I mean, when we think of computer programming, we often think of, you know, some hard core coding. And, but when you're five and six, you start with blocks and ups and arrows and things like that. So that's really the basis of that too as well. So, and Mrs. Sibronski's done a fantastic job working with our first graders as well as all of our other grades to make sure that this coding and this type of thinking, that process, whether it be the design process and/or that scientific thinking, be implemented not only in science, but ultimately into math and reading, social studies, and all those other things too. So, thank you guys for coming. Mr. Dobbs, you've got a little something for us.
Maddy? Maddy? Thank you for coming. Thank you. Willian?
Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Miles and Dan, thank you very, very much for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next to the old address is the minute. I'll second. Okay, the motion on second. Are there any corrections, additions? In all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we've got the financial report.
I'll make a call through. Our deposit zero 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 five five three six six four through zero 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 five five three six 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 for two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty eight cents. Nine zero zero four three two nine one through nine zero zero four three three nine six for one hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Nine zero zero four three four seven five through nine zero zero four three five oh eight for one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents. Zero 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 five five three six six seven through zero 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 five five three six six eight for four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Wire transfers for payroll liabilities. Wire number two zero one six zero zero three eight three through two zero one six zero zero four seven for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Accounts payable. Check number five one nine five four through five two zero three six for two hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Credit card transaction zero one two zero through zero one two zero for twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. ACH direct deposit number one six one seven zero 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 seven nine through one six one seven zero 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 eight eight for one thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. I'll sign.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Are there any other questions? Okay, is it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passed. Okay, we've got delegations to be heard. And we've got Stephanie.
Mr. Rockford is thanking you for taking the time to look into the busing of Bark River crossings. I had a chance to be on the agenda item tonight. So I really appreciate you taking the time to look things over and discuss it for me. As no surprise to you, what I would love to see is that the residents of Bark River crossings could ride the existing bus that does travel through our subdivision at no charge. And this would be done without doing the hassle of a formal complaint and looking into everything. What I'd like to share with you, and I think you find it very interesting, is some of the facts that have brought up to me over the last month. I had two families approach me last month. And it relates to how you've discussed how our enrollment is declining. So it is a concern. And these two families that approached me has a lot to do with that. The first family has four children. They do live in Bark River crossings. And because of when it was challenged back in two thousand nine or twelve, I don't remember the exact year, that it was her concern. But she, the four children that she knew was coming into the program, they open enrolled to Northlake due to that busing issue. In Northlake, they are allowed to hop on any bus at any existing stop for free, even if they're open enrollment students. This lady in our subdivision has four children that go to Northlake now instead of Merton because of the fact that it's so easy to hop on their bus at no charge. The second family that came up to me is she has two three-year-olds. And where she's at right now is kind of debating on what's going to happen with this discussion is her husband works at Quad Graphics. And at Quad Graphics, they have a childcare program where you can get bused from their childcare to the Sussex School District. So what she's debating right now is if she should keep them in Merton and hopefully ride our bus for free. Or to enroll them in the childcare from Quad that could get bused for free, even though the days off with the husband, she'd still have to drive them out there. In all and all, she's just looking into all the pricing and things. So that the six students right there that we've bused because of busing. I remember my story from last year when I brought it up. When I had, my oldest was three years old. I had her enrolled in Hartland Childcare. And that childcare also bused or delivered them to the school. So I called the school at that point and asked about the busing situation. Unfortunately, you know, my problem was I didn't tell them exactly where I lived. I just asked if they could be bused from the babysitter who was on this road. They said, yes, of course. So I was all happy and moved them to the new childcare that was on the existing bus route. Come to find out, no, I forgot to tell them I lived in Bark River crossings, which I had to pay. So, long story short, if I would have known the basics or the facts, I would have kept my child, two children, at Hartland as well, just because of the ease of allowing them to get to the school with the existing childcare that I had. So, we end that up, so that's four, five, six, seven, eight children. And then, also, my dad's daughter opened and enrolled her child to Swallow, two children to Swallow School due to the timing. And I know that's not, we can't correct that, obviously, in the O.A. as well. However, she did say if there was busing, the busing would probably pick a month between eight and eight-thirty, that we could have rode the bus. And the timing would have worked out for their family to attend Merton. But since Swallow started earlier, I guess, that's why they decided to open a enrollment as well. So, you know, the declining enrollment is something to discuss. I feel that would be a good discussion point to look into. I mean, that's tempting, just that I personally know of, and I haven't been reaching out to people, trying to be a great story, that's just people that have approached me. With just in Bark River crossings, just people that have approached me and that's tempting. So I have a feeling there are more out there. So that's one discussion point I feel that would be beneficial to you. So what can we do about this? It doesn't have to affect the whole community. I don't feel, Bark River crossings is so unique and with such unique circumstances. Yes, I do feel that the whole community does have some circumstances, like the no lighting, the no sidewalks, the law enforcement, the lack of law enforcement. However, to Bark River crossings, we do have specific concerns of the water hazard, the aggressive dock that has a record that's on our route, the bars with the smoking area that's connected to the sidewalk that the children be walking across. The path that connects our main street to Bark River crossings has absolutely no lighting. So if it put lighting in, would be a money problem. And also, obviously, the multiple injury, or multiple intersections where the students have to cross without crossing guards that potentially, as we know, can result in an injury. Yes, I can see how some people would be like, it's not our problem if they're injured before school because it's not on school grounds. It's not on school time. I kind of see that. However, when it was confronted or brought up that we didn't feel it was safe, it was also decided that the board did say, yes, we agree with the two-mile, but yes, we agree that it is okay to walk. So I do feel you have to realize that it is being told to us that we feel it's safe. So I do agree that it's some, you do have to look into injuries. And if something happened, I feel like we should look into trying to fix it. So my solution would be, hopefully, that we can discuss a change that because of our union situation with the bus that already goes through, that the board would discuss and allow the Bark River Crossing residents to hop on that existing bus that goes directly through our subdivision and allow them to ride for free because of our union situation.
Are there any questions the board has for Stephanie? At this point in the meeting, I'd rather have a conversation going back and forth here than later on when it comes up on the agenda.
I guess I don't have a question then. Some other things we can discuss later when we get to it on the agenda.
Yeah, I will go to your phone calls too, if you have any questions.
Did you want me to? I can address some of the points during our discussion items if you'd like to.
Yeah, you can address those points.
Those points, okay.
In the discussion, I just don't want to have discussions going back and forth between the audience.
Route number one goes through. Yep. And in the afternoon, it doesn't go through Bark River. It only goes towards the west end, which would be phase three of, it comes in on Doran Road, circles down around the pond, and then goes out towards Doran Route two as well. So when we think of phase one and phase two of Bark River, you know, there'd be a lot of people towards the front of the subdivision on Doran from B.B. That's phase one. They would have to walk, you know, probably a little bit longer than that point two of a mile if they wanted to get to that existing stop. Because an existing stop is, actually, I can tell you.
Well, we can discuss that. I just, I just wanted, if anybody had any questions with Stephanie, we can discuss that in the agenda. Okay. And Brendan checked here, would you want to speak during, during, uh, presidential? First story. Well, you know, we're going to keep moving here then. And we are, uh, to district committee, administrators report, and we've got donations.
Yep, we would like to thank the PTO for some donations of four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents for a rug in Ms. Fontaine's room and some plastic books for Ms. Schmidt, Ms. Frankord, and Ms. Hess. So just looking for a motion to approve the donations from the PTO as presented.
I want to make a motion to approve the donations from the PTO as presented.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion on second, is there a discussion? In all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Personnel action.
We've got a few personnel actions. We would like to present the resignation of Jessica Westrick to the board. We'd like to thank Jessica, who's been a first grade and 5K teacher for us for, what about five, six years with the district. She has decided to stay home with her new family. So we wish her the best of luck moving forward. And it was a very, very difficult decision for her. Also, we would like to have a few letters of appointment we would like to present to the board. And one is Mrs. Kokey. Is that how we call her?
Kokey.
Kokey. Who, Tanya has been selected to replace Lindsay Johnson as our business assistant slash bookkeeper. She comes to us with a lot of experience as in the business office for, in the private sector. So we'd like to present her letter of appointment as well. As well as letters of appointment, we'd like to present Mark Ferguson for a two-and-a-half-hour lunch custodian, replacing, um...
Bolton.
Bolton, yup. Diana? No, Christina. Christina Bolton. As well as Ian Melnick, a new student who is going to be replacing. We've got a couple other students who've been working for us. Alex Tanky, as well as Jenna Nighouse, as their softball, baseball seasons get going. So Ian Melnick is another former Merton grad, and we'd like to welcome him aboard the team as well. And then, lastly, we would like to present the retirement letters of Laura Day, Linda Kircher, and Rachel Meyer. Mrs. Day has been working for us for nineteen years, Linda Kircher nineteen years. And Rachel, thank you very much for the sixteen years of experience and sacrifice and commitment to our community. So their letters of resignation are presented too as well. So I guess we're just looking for a motion to approve the resignation of Jessica Westrick. The letters of appointment desk presented, as well as the retirements of Laura Day, Linda Kircher, and Rachel Meyer.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Jessica Westrick. I'll make a motion, should we second that or?
We should probably.
We second, yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Discussion. On favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of appointment for Tanya Kokey, business assistant, bookkeeper, Mark Ferguson, custodian, and Ian Melnick, custodian.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Discussion. On favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the retirements of Laura Day, Linda Kircher, and Rachel Meyer.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Questions, terms, on favor then?
Thank all of the people retiring for our, for our service.
Here, I can do the end of the year. Say goodbye.
You know, we're here. We don't get together all at once.
Okay. Going on, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay. We are on to information. We've got the finance committee.
Yup. As presented by the finance committee this past week, two big items. One is this food service. And as we know, we've been talking about what food service direction we would like to go. And the district was pursuing three options. One was to continue just in a, a individual entity with a food service provider. Another one was to do it ourselves, go in-house without a provider. And the second was looking at a shared director or a shared service agreement with another local school district. And that local school district who answered the call, who just happened to be going out for RFP as well, was Hartland Lakeside. Hartland Lakeside, about a week ago, has had this same conversation with their board about the possibility of teaming up with Merton to share a food service director. Okay, so that was kind of the third option that we pursued. And it's at this time that I would like to present that option to the board to consider as a recommendation moving forward. as a recommendation moving forward. The way a shared food service director would work is, is we would create one shared RFP, a response for proposal, request for proposal, I should say, and both of our names would be on that. Per the RFP, we would be very clear to any outside vendor who wanted to bid on it, that we would be looking to share a food service director at the ratio of sixty percent to Hartland Lakeside, forty percent to Merton. That's about the ratio of our, of our attendance and our population. So, when we take a look at that, and the board has some information about what that might look like, when we take a look at the director, if we rewind about three years ago, when we were with Toker, we shared a food service director between Richmond and Merton. At the time, Merton was right around that, that sixty, sixty-five percent, Richmond was thirty-five, because that was the ratio. We are looking to do the very same thing again this time, or at least that would be the recommendation of the administration. You can see what it would be proposal, this is just one example, this was just Chartwells. Reason why Chartwells is kind of helping us with this is they have experience doing a shared director with two other school districts, Cudahy and St. Francis. And the other piece is it's not uncommon for the current food service contractor to help with the RFP. Avions will be helping with ours too as well, moving forward. So, they just threw some, a proposed cost out about what it would look like and why would two school districts think about sharing a food service director? And when you work out the math, a sixty, forty split, when we take a look at the cost savings between the two school districts, they would be pretty significant. For Hartland Lakeside, we would be, they'd be looking at right around a seventeen thousand eight hundred dollar savings, and for us alone, we'd be looking at well over ten, ten, eleven thousand dollars from what we're currently spending on a food service director. So, obviously, would, there would be some buying power that goes together. Obviously, you've got greater buying power. Chartwells currently operates Arrowhead as well, so they are in the area. So, again, more, more bulk, obviously getting at a little bit cheaper rate too as well. So, so when we take a look at the idea of sharing a food service director, we feel that that would be a very positive step. It worked for us before in the past, and that's where we really saw some nice increases in our Fund Fifty moving forward prior to us trying to do it on our own. So, I guess that would be one piece.
Does that then mean that we would hire more lower level staff to do more of the cooking? Or, right, because right now, we have a food service director and then, you know, who does other things, right?
Right, right. The way it would work is we would keep our, whoever comes in, part of the RFP will be keep our employees, okay? Our kids know them, they know us, and we would continue to do that. So, the way it would work, because we wouldn't always have a food service director on site, is what we would do is we would appoint a lead at each, each of the buildings, or actually each of the districts. So, Merton would have a lead, they would be compensated additionally, we would give them an hourly bump in their compensation at both sites. Now, the other piece I do, I want to make sure is clear is, is the RFP would be together, the contracts would be separate. Okay? So, this isn't a sixty-six oh three, no intergovernmental agreements, this is truly a request for proposal between two school districts, and then the, the company that would be awarded the bid, they would sign a contract with Hartland Lakeside, and Merton would sign a contract. There would be no sharing of the contract, and both of us are obligated, because any savings goes with us, it's not a co-op, so we wouldn't share any savings. We really, truly are separate entities, just sharing an employee, pretty much kind of a shared service agreement, and, and so that's what we would be looking at. So, while the lead person is not here, while the director isn't here, we would have a person in appointment in a leadership role to assist and move forward to as well. So, thank you for highlighting that.
So, that fills the lead too, that we would have an extra employee?
No, we would not have an extra employee, we would have a, an employee who is compensated additional, say fifty cents or a dollar, whatever it is, to be.
So, we do the same number of, yes, employee, but not have the lead person that was also working?
The director right now is currently on site doing some work.
Correct. So, that work that they're doing, that isn't the director work, gets done by the current people we already have, and their current time, you know, current number of hours they already work.
We would have to take a look at that, but yes, that would be the anticipation.
Okay, so would, even though we're not hiring people, they may end up working a couple more hours or?
No, I don't think it's going to be, right now, the, the way the, I mean, in Jay's building in particular, the food service director sometimes serves, but they, they plan accordingly, do not have him there, really.
Okay.
So, so he's, he's doing bouncing back and forth. But to answer your question, we would be looking at staying status quo with our staff, the number of hours and stuff like that, and keeping them, just increasing what, and making a point person, kind of the lead shifter on that role too as well, so.
It's just like when we had Tyra before.
Yep, just like we had Tyra.
And then Janet would go to Richmond.
Richmond, correct, yep.
And then come back, and someone else was in charge while she was gone.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And our head count is the same as when we had Tyra.
No, our head count is much lower, because when we, when we had Tyra, we just didn't need, we had close to probably nine hundred and sixty, nine hundred and.
We had a lot more students.
We had a lot more students, right. And we've already made adjustments this year to, when we take a look at the custodial area, we've been able to shift some of our primary lunch custodian into other areas of the building to, to be in cleaning and no bathrooms or whatever it might be, and John's got a rotation on that too as well. Because of the, the dip in enrollment in particular at the elementary school, at the primary school, we have made our food service providers, workers, do some of the table cleanup and do some of those other things that in the past we used to through John's crew at the, the lunchtime. So, so that's one piece, and, and just looking forward, there's two pieces here, and ultimately at the, before we move on, would like a recommendation from the board, just to kind of, hey, just kind of like a head nod, is everybody comfortable moving forward in a shared food service director agreement? The other piece that is real important, that I think we need a strong recommendation from the board is, is whether or not we consider entering into the school lunch program, the national school lunch program. The way the national school lunch program works is, is you get reimbursed for not only your free reduced lunch students, there's a set rate across the board, across the country, that you get reimbursed for every student who's on free reduced lunch. And then you also get a set reimbursement rate per lunch for every lunch you sell, which is right around that thirty, thirty-four cents for that reimbursement from that standpoint too. So, when we run the dollars, if we're being part of the program this year, we would be an increase in revenue of over thirty thousand dollars. Now, a lot has changed in the national program. Their snacks continue to get better, and it's interesting, as we continue to see the science of food get better, very similar to the things that worry you, you know, hey, that never tasted so good, yet it's calorie free or whatever it is. As being part of the national school lunch program, there are specific requirements that the food has to maintain, you know, serving sizes, protein sizes across the week, et cetera, et cetera. So, we've had both Avions and Chartwells come in and take a look at our primary program. Our primary program is basically operating underneath the same, those kind of guidelines already, portion size, whole grains, et cetera, et cetera. The intermediate school would be tweaked a little bit, but both companies felt like it would be almost negligible. And some of the things we would bring in, we'd be looking at would be increased sellers, for instance, whether it's Furry-O or some of the Smart Snap ice cream or whatever it might be, some of those à la carte items that are considered healthy, but yet high-end sellers across some of the other school districts that run the national program. So, I guess the administration is recommending moving forward with the recommendation of moving into the program because of, we feel, we really got a strong sense that the program will not suffer by entering into the program. And the other piece is, is we really feel that there's some revenue out there for us to grab by, you know, filling out some form, and I know Sherry will take on some of the burden, but the food service director carries the majority of it, but we feel that there's some dollars to be gained into our Fund Fifty to, to bring us back up to where we want to be in that, in that area too, so.
In the national program, is there any?
I, like, if we decide that we want to be part of the national program and it just goes terribly, and next year we want to do something else, is there any commitment, you know, that you signed up for or anything like that, or is it just you can do it whenever you want?
I'm thinking with the RFP, that would be.
So, as part of the five-year?
Yeah.
I, I think so, I think so, because when you do go into an RFP underneath the foods, underneath the national program, it is required that you do an RFP every five years. You have to, it's not like you can keep pushing off into program, we need to go through that formality. Phil, we can ask that question to find out what that would look like?
I mean, I guess it would make sense, I mean, we're just part of the RFP, you know, five-year cycle, that's fine, but just worth checking.
It's a good question, we can ask that question. We certainly can. So, I guess from the board level, two things. One, are we comfortable recommending moving forward with a shared food service director, a joint RFP with Hartland Lakeside School District?
I am, as long as it is a joint RFP.
It's a joint RFP, it'd be separate contracts, so.
And they're, they agree to that?
They understand that, correct. Yep, they understand that. So, there isn't, it, there, what happens there, it happens here, are completely separate. We make a ton of money, they make a ton of money, we don't intertwine, there are no dollars shared, it really is, we share the cost of the food service director.
Really, who's responsible for the review of the food service director?
Me.
That would be Diane Taylor and Sherry Greger.
Correct, yes, and that's something that I would like to get a little bit more involved in, having more monthly meetings, we haven't been doing so far, just a little bit more than, exactly, our participation rate, what type of marketing they're doing, and really have more of a communication with the next food service company that comes in.
Those would all be part of the RFP, correct. But the, the overseer and the supervisor would be both Sherry Greger and Diane Taylor.
And you've already met that person, right?
We have, we have. However, I just want to make it very, very clear.
That's the person that currently does it at Hartland.
That currently does it at Hartland.
Assuming Carlos would win.
If Carlos wins, they've already produced who the food service director will be, but it will be an open, it's not a sealed bid by any means, but it is, it will be the opportunity for any food service provider to bid. And, you know, if Avions gets the bid, they may keep John Zynus, that may be the individual that they do too, but sometimes we don't meet the food service provider or the food service director, you know, because usually they get the RFP if it's awarded, and then we're part of that interview process, and that's what happened last time as well. So, does the board feel confident about recommending that moving forward? Sherry, Sherry, food service director, we're good?
Yep.
And what do we feel about the national program?
I hope so. My, my kids went from here, obviously, to Arrowhead, and when they were here, it was Toker service, but they're really pleased with the food at Arrowhead.
And that's a national program. Now, it looks a little, every building you go up, it looks a little bit different, they get a little bit more aggressive per se with the snacks kind of?
Well, yeah, that's the thing is that, you know, I don't know if the base lunch is what it's good, because they have all their side items that they're buying, but it's also.
That's, that's the worst of all, I bet, to my superism.
I know my kids took lunch at Arrowhead once, but they got all the side items, that was it.
Yeah. So, are we, are we okay with that? Okay with that? Okay, so we'll make that recommendation forward, we'll move that forward and see what happens.
You know, I want to say this because when we started the lunch program here, the directive from the board was that it was not to be subsidized by, Fund Fifty was supposed to end up on its own, not subsidized from, from Fund Ten, and we're going to end up, these two years now, a subsidy, a Fund Fifty.
Correct.
So, we need to do something to make a change, because that was, initial directive was.
Right, and I agree, I agree. All right, the, the last thing that the finance committee took a, just kind of took a peek at, and this is just for information only, just wanted to share with the board some of the insurance conversations that are being discussed from the Waukesha County Co-op, which is the part that Merton is in. We know that our current healthcare plan and design has increased ten percent for next year, and in response to that, the Co-op leadership has asked WEA Trust and M3 as our broker to engage in some conversations about what are some possible options we would have moving forward if we wanted to take a look at some possible savings instead of a ten percent increase. And what you have in front of you are, basically, there's six different options, and, and there's, there's a little bit of subset from each option, there's three main options, and then within those options, you take a look at either an increased deductible or co-insurance. So, I don't need to go through each of these plans in, in details, because tomorrow, Sherry and I will be attending, we have another meeting set forth, and, and I know M3 is very excited about some of the information that they've found out, and we'll be able to share them forward. So, and I know I've had some individual conversations with each of the board members, so I don't need to rehearse that too. So, just wanted to make you guys aware that we are in conversations with M3 and WEA to make sure that we're taking a look at how can we, you know, continue to take, to offer a great health insurance package at a, at a very, very reasonable rate, but we also know that ten percent of an increase is still pretty high, but as high as some people, but still pretty high. One thing I do want to note, and I did talk to the board about this, is, is that ten percent increase is still lower than where we were in the year fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Okay, so our healthcare costs still are lower than where they were two years ago, and they will be regardless of all what we do moving forward. So, it still was a very, very good change for us to make going from United Healthcare to WEA Trust. Because of that cost savings, we are going to stay with WEA for one more year, see what happens, and then the Co-op will have to decide whether or not we're going to go back out to bid, create that RFP to find a new, possible new insurance provider at a more competitive rate if we feel WEA is getting a little bit non-competitive. So, just wanted to inform the board of the progress that Sherry and I are making towards some of those healthcare conversations, but nothing's been decided from the Co-op, it is truly just discussion only at this point.
Okay, we are on to the principals' reports.
Do you want to talk about facility, or do you want to skip that?
Co-op is a.
We can, we can do that, why don't we do that in new business?
Yeah, I don't think there's actually.
We can, we can present everything at that time. I'll use double A. So, Mike is here, and Brenda is with Mike tonight.
She brought, she brought me along. Brenda Jones is one of our literacy specialists and has brought a wonderful breadth of information relative to how we use our measuring academic progress results. And so, this is a, a bit of a primer, but also information about how we take the data that we get from those results and put them into action with the teachers' cell. And then at the, at the close of it, you'll have a context for what we, what we do as far as an update on our school improvement plan. So, do this little, little piece before that, and that will be the last slide to see what our kids are doing mid-year. Voice up.
So, in the reading world, we call this background knowledge, so we're just going to quickly build some background knowledge, just so you have a frame of reference, and this is all stuff we review with the teachers as well, but so that they understood, and I know you guys have a baseline of math testing and how it's used, but we reminded the teachers as well that this is not a proficiency exam, it's not like a forward exam or what the WKCB was, this is truly an individualized test that gears interim and tells us where our students are working at. So, it's a different type of looking at the data. When we look at the data for forward exam, we use that, but we also look at our math data, but it's a different way of looking at that data. So, that was really important for our teachers to understand. The RIT is a little bit hard for people to understand at times, and so what we need to understand about the math test is the way it goes is they keep giving you questions that go as high as the student's capability can go. So, if you think of going to the doctors, you're ceiling. So, where the student caps out, then it will drop down. So, their RIT is fifty percent, so where they're averaging at fifty percent. So, that's a little bit of a struggle for teachers to understand sometimes. It's truly basically their instructional level. So, if I get a two oh eight, I'm instructed in the two oh eight band. A RIT in second grade of two oh eight is the same as a sixth grader who's getting a two oh eight, so that does not change. The band in and of itself, look at the levels of text complexity and problem solving and critical thinking, and that's where the band number comes from. It is an equal interval RIT range, so that's ten points, so if you're at the low end of the two ten range or the high end, that doesn't matter, because we think of it within a band. Does that make sense? So, one of the big things we've been working on with our teachers is really equipping them. They've been giving this math test over and over again, but now what do we do with that information? So, something that Jay and Mike and I have worked together with is to really help the teachers and equip them with looking at a child's individual growth. So, I have a class of eighteen kids, all of them have different RIT ranges, what does that mean for me? Well, I can look at these bands, and I can set specific goals for each child. So, within the third grade classroom, there's a learning path that which one of my students are going towards. So within the third grade classroom, there's a learning path that each one of my students are going towards.
Check their face for understanding. That's pretty good, though, is all. We're good?
I agree, yeah. Um, you wanna go to the first one, just so they can see, oh, no, sorry, the first graph, that one. Um, so this graph, when the teachers log into MAP, every student has a graph exactly like this, but there's a few things I want to highlight for us here. You'll see the dotted line and the yellow band, that's the national norm. Okay, so that's where the United States, who takes this test, every kid average, falls. If you look at dot dash, dot dash, that's way above, that's our Merton average. And so when speaking with our teachers, we talked about this, and we had a conversation around this, because the national norm is one point, but when we look at our Merton norm, it's significantly higher, right? So our students are performing at a higher level, which means we're not just gonna say, okay, they all got it, they're high achievers. No, what do we need to do to push them even higher, because they're achieving at higher levels already? Questions about the graph? This is one individual student, but it compares them to the national norm, our district norm, and then their growth over time.
This is relatively new from MAP to put this out. It's a new piece of their information that they're sharing with teachers. When we had a, this was part of our school improvement plan committee meeting, and when that, when that group was meeting, we shared the fact that this should be in front of everybody. So we had a staff development meeting, one of our Wednesdays, where we, Brenda shared this with, with everyone, and everybody walked away with a clear understanding of what this looks like graphically, and what it means when you get, obtain information from, from a test.
So, um, percentile bands, the green one, the high end is 80, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's a-
So that's about where we're at?
Right, yeah.
That's our average kid.
And so the next one, again, same student, but now I'm really individualizing again and looking and breaking down this child-specific trend line, as well as growth setting. So whenever a teacher logs in, all 18 of their students, this information is at their fingertips. So they can see this information, and they can really individualize and personalize the student's instruction. And so they can see, you can see the student in fall was a 165, at winter shot up to the 188. And so teachers can start to see, um, a lot of times it's helpful as they take MAP over a period of time, you start to see where the peaks are, and where we have to be really intentional about our instruction, and make sure that we're hitting some of the things that students need. Because as that instruction gets harder and that critical thinking becomes harder, we need to make sure that we're extremely structured and really specific with the things that we're gearing our children up for. So this is that.
What does a typical score in the bottom of that, on a log of the page?
The typical score there?
Yeah.
That's the typical score. They will give you a typical score for that grade level, like that fall percentile or spring percentile. And MAP will tell you, and if you look in their sites, or even print the parent-friendly version. They don't want you to associate, in third grade, every child should do this, but they do give you norms, and they'll give you the typical score, just so you have a frame of reference.
In practice, you've got 22 kids in the room, how do you individualize instruction with 22 kids?
Sure, great question. That'll take me to the next slide. Great segue. So, one of, because our teachers ask me that all the time, right? They're like, great, Brenda, you come in and you tell us to individualize and personalize, but I have 20 kids with 20 different needs, what am I supposed to do? So one of the things is we're really intentional about our curriculum, hoping that our curriculum teaches kind of a blanket of the things that they should be learning within that grade level. But then the next thing that we do, um, this is called the student learning profile. And basically what it does is it will break down, skill by skill, what the students need to be working on. So then through coaching and the professional development that we're doing, I've been training teachers to look for strands. So yes, I have 22 kids, but I have six of them that really need to work on context clues. So I do a strategy group with them on context clues. So I'm able to individualize their learning, but I'm not swimming in all these lesson plans, individualizing for every single student. So what I can do through this is when I get this printed report, we look for common trends, and then we kind of group our students based on those needs. Does that make sense?
Brenda, questions where you-
Yeah.
Do the teachers have, and do they really look at each, each one of the 22 students to say, ah, here's the six students that need this, or is that something that's programmatically, maybe you write that up into a program?
Yeah, there's different reports that will show overall, like, skill sets that they need, like main idea, that's a bigger skill set. This literally breaks down specifics of root words, prefix, suffix of Greek and Latin in grades two through five. So this gets really specific for some of our kids, especially those high achievers, that we need to know, okay, they're in third grade, but some of the stuff they're ready for is sixth grade, what do I do? This kind of breaks that down a little bit more. But there are more generic reports that you can kind of group a little bit more flexible.
Joe, we can give each teacher their own kids, and then you can sort it any way you want to. So you'd be able to sort high, low, any way you want to, when you get the RIT score, either mathematics or literacy.
And one of my jobs for coaching them, and I just did this today with a second grade teacher, is to really train them and get them to look at this and look for trends, and look for themes, so that they're not overwhelmed in papers of data saying, I have Johnny here who needs this, Suzie who needs this, how do I reach all of these? So my job is to look at this and say, okay, this falls under this spectrum of reading skills, let's start a group that way.
And the groups are always changing, and some kids progress faster.
Yeah, and that's the whole purpose of the workshop model, is that it lends itself to flexible grouping. So that, you know, when I was a kid, I was a bluebird. And I knew I was gonna be a bluebird all year long, right? I never changed, no matter what I did, you were a bluebird. That doesn't happen anymore, the groups are constantly changing and fluid.
And when we say groups, we anticipate, we have a mini lesson to what Brenda was saying before, that teaches grade level content to, you know, you teach, teach to the 80% grade level content. Then we have about 45 minutes in the literacy block and a writing block to then get to this personalization about, okay, strategy grouping, book club of commonalities amongst kids, or individualize, whatever the kid needs.
Yes, the groups, essentially, the groups are constantly changing in and out. Because, and that is the hope, is that come next test, this student, these skill sets change, right? And they've been moved up, so we can hopefully answer then on what she's learning and some of those things.
How many work groups can we do for each teacher with that?
Sure, um, so within the reading workshop block, there should be at least three to four different groups that happen during their independent work time. So when I work with a teacher, one of my specific goals this year has been, how do we kind of get the most bang for our buck, right? And we need to see as many kids and differentiate our instruction as much as possible, so we become more intentional about the time that we have. And that has allowed us to get three to four, in some groups, five, throughout that time. So I would say three to four, for sure.
One of the things that we've been focusing on this year is our instructional coaching, kind of the, the entire model, you know, whether it be the mini lesson, mid-workshop interruption, and some of this strategy group. Next year, Brenda and I, along with Jess Prozier, have already sat down and really started to target what we're gonna look at for PD next year. And it's really been an intentional strategy group, small group coaching into the RTI blocks, really, about really getting specific. We've gotten good at the mini lesson, now let's get better at how do we intentionally move kids from skill level to skill level, RIT moving up, or FNP level.
Because the old way of doing things was, a lot of times, everybody got the same thing, right? You came back, you did a book walk, you talked about new words. Well, some of our kids that are in the high RIT range, they don't need to do a book walk, because just by looking at the title, their critical thinking and their background knowledge, they know what that book's gonna be about. So rather than do a book walk with them and use five minutes of that time, we bypass that for that strategy group, and we get right into what they need to know. So starting to equip the teachers with that kind of skill set, so they can become more strategic with their groups.
How many different, uh, I guess, subcategories are, are presented in terms of the different types of things that need to get worked on? There's three here, um, as kind of higher level sets.
Sure, so you have, the way MAP is broken up in the reading, it's vocabulary acquisition, then we've got literature, and we've got informational. So we've got our nonfiction, our fiction, and then vocabulary and word usage. And so our vocabulary in the littles, we're really looking at understanding and identifying new words. When we get into the higher RIT range, we're looking at more domain-specific vocabulary. So now we're looking at the technical reading, the trades. So if I'm reading an automa, an automotive, is that what it is, see? An automotive magazine, I don't read them clearly, I'm gonna be able to navigate those domains, those domain-specific words. And so those are kind of, those are the three big heavy hitters. And then within that, like, within literature and informational, we have inferring and drawing conclusions, we've got main idea and sequencing, and then we've got their decoding, and then just their basic comprehension of retelling and all of that. So those are some of the really big categories that we tell the teachers to zero in on.
So the, the scores that get presented, you know, to parents and whatever, you know, it's a score for literacy?
Yeah.
And then, are you guys, if you, uh, in your system, able to see different, the accumulation of that score? So like, you get, you know, maybe they are really good at vocab, but they're not any good at nonfiction or whatever, so you can specialize that way?
Yeah, and I didn't take a screenshot, because I didn't know how in-depth we needed to be with this, but-
Sorry.
No, that's okay, this is like, I'm a nerd, I don't read automotive, but I read this stuff a lot.
That's better.
Then, when you log in, you'll see your student's name, and then it will say their lowest scoring band of the reading, so vocabulary acquisition might be 189. And then literature's 193, and informational's 197. And so then you can click on it, and it will break down their greatest needs, and that's right at the top. But it breaks down where their lowest reading strand would be.
Phil, if you take a look at a stu, at a parent, at the parent report too, it does highlight the three different content areas within the reading band, and then the five different mathematical ones, too, as well. So that is all given out to the parent. Okay.
Um, and so, here we have, just so you guys can kind of have an understanding of some of the things that we're doing with the teachers. So when you first log in, and that's what we were just talking about, it'll say informational text underneath, that's literature, and then vocabulary acquisition. But now, another thing that MAP has added is you can change your skills based on what you would like to do. So when we're looking at grouping our kids, and how do we meet 18 at all the same time, we can start to develop how we read through those skill sets. So develop is automatically checked, because that's where they're instructional at. But if I have a child who's really a high learner and they exceed, I can go to introduce, and that's going to take me to the next RIT band and the next RIT band above. So it'll show me things that are grade levels above, and that I can start to expose that child to, and do some extra learning, so that they can enhance their learning that way. And then it reinforces, obviously, that spiral review to make sure our kids are keeping what they learned previously. So, all of that-
Any questions, Sherri?
Yeah, sorry. This is almost as bad as my first map all the teachers this year, right? They all just stared at me. So our SIP team met, and we reviewed this information together, and then we have a data spreadsheet for the primary school. So you can see the grade level breakdown, and Mike, I'll let you jump in on this a little bit more, um, because you were with the team.
Oh, I think the key part of this is schools, we have a school improvement plan, but as, the real foundation of this is why are we going for each individual child to make them reach their potential and perform where they, where they really can, where they can get to, and, and get to that ceiling, or get, break that ceiling? So we have, we've gone through and went through the numbers, um, with, uh, Dawn Bobber, she helped us with accumulating all this, and to sit down with our group and say, are we on track, are we getting where we want to be? And that's what this was supposed to be, just that snapshot back to saying, are things making a difference? And one thing we noticed is that, um, reading's doing pretty well. It's up, uh, at that 77% mark with, with kids, um, performing where we want from the beginning. I think the, uh, the focus on reading is really making a difference. We're not focusing on MAP, we're not working on staff development for MAP construction and being intentional. We still have small groups, small group breakouts, and watching a teacher, they do that with everything from geometry to place value to borrowing and carrying, renaming. So this is, these are all areas, we can see them by, especially in K and one, we had some issues with technology. It kept going out, coming back in, going out, and that's the worst thing they have with 5G in first grade, could be spending an hour in a lab, working on a, an assessment. So that's where those numbers might be a little slothier than the others, but, overall, the biggest part of this from us is teachers getting a better understanding of what do I do with data? How can I make my teaching more focused on what the kids really need? And to me, that's what this is really, really all about. So that's why Brenda gave you the background on the first part.
And that was our conversation when we looked at the numbers. And when I speak with teachers and coach them, or we do professional development, is that these tests aren't just happening to the teachers and the kids anymore, right? We sit them on the computer, we cross our fingers, we hope everything goes well. Well, now we're equipping and empowering our teachers with what they need, so that they can tailor their instruction to the gamut, because when you are in first grade, you have learners all over the board, same with sixth grade. Well, now we're giving you the tools, we're giving you the resources and the expert people to come in and help you feel like you can change these numbers and help them to a forward. So that was kind of the basis of our conversation at that SIP team that I joined that day.
The primary schools are at a real interesting point between kids being fluent and kids being real comprehenders of what they're reading. We've got some kids who can read lights out. So, tell me about what you read, huh? They're not reading with intentionality, they're just, I got it done, next. Tell me about that last book you read. What was the title of that?
It all happens.
So we're getting, we're trying to slow, slow the pace down for kids to reread and jot and find evidence. That's a big, big part of what we do. The forward exam, go back and find evidence for this response. Oh, now I'm gonna go back and find it. Well, we practice that. Some of those, uh, conferring groups, that's, that's the inside, that's the guts of what this shows. Okay?
So the goals that are set are individual student goals, correct?
Not for the school improvement goal, that was school-wide, you said that.
Based around each individual child, meaning their MAP goal, right? Meaning the MAP goal, because each student gets a MAP goal. And then we track the progress towards that goal from fall to spring. And we do a mid-winter check, and we do that right around, right after the New Year, when we did that. So this helps us say, hey, who's on track? Who's beating that projection? And, uh, that we can adjust accordingly for our kids who are not. And right now, we're looking at right around 77, 70 percentage of our kids are right on that track. Now, the other thing that MAP will tell you is, is the higher you are, the more difficult it is to move. And we have a lot of, well, if our average kid is in the 80th percentile in second grade, for instance, um, they're not all like that, but in second grade, it's 80th percentile. MAP will tell you it's gonna be difficult, you need to be really, really intentional, and that's why, hence the idea of this, idea of personalized learning, small group, all the way to personalized, to really give that child what they need, truly intentional.
And that's where we have been using MAP more strategically this year, because grade level content is wonderful, and it teaches the kids what they need. But what if you have a kid who's already coming in with enough background knowledge and critical thinking skills that they already are at grade level, right? And that's some of our Merton kids, they're above the average. So now, what do we do to take them to the next level? And this is what we're using to equip our teachers to feel like they can do that.
This is one piece of data we look at. We also have the, the FNP assessment, which is a combination of fluency, accuracy, and comprehension as well, so that's another piece. And then ultimately, we also do have the forward exam. Doesn't give us a ton of information, but, um, as we know, the forward is the most public of our assessments. I mean, not everybody's gonna hear, whoa, it's 77% of your kids got the MAP goal. What about the forward, because that's what we're gauged upon. Uh, just so you know, thanks to Brenda and Heather, and Mary Iwansky as well, we've got, we are about to launch this week, we are launching, uh, a good two to three weeks of Forward Test Prep. And those lessons have been created by both Brenda and Heather in conjunction with Mary Iwansky, using some of our personalized technology in MOVI Max in the area of mathematics and literacy, really getting intentional to see what we can do with those forward scores as well, too, so. But we also feel that the, the lessons that are being presented are basically, what kind of strategies can we give our kids to persevere through those? And what happens when you come across something you don't know? And what happens when you come across something you don't know? Okay? What happens if the test is a little bit higher than what you're used to? How do we expose and give them the tools to equip to be confident moving into that assessment tool as well? So.
Is, is this a measure of the percentage of students that are achieving the math, the school math improvement goal or their individualized math improvement goal?
There's two questions there. One is, is we have a list of individual students, but then this is, we've got seventy percent of our kids who are on track in the area of math and seventy-seven on reading. We then break down about who those kids are and what to do with it. Some of our grade levels are higher, as you can see, some of them are higher, some of them are lower. But that's what we would be really looking at is, is how are we doing? And then what do we do to respond? The kids also get their math results too as well. And teachers have conversations with them, say, hey, how are we doing? What's the next goal, et cetera, et cetera. So.
But this is a combination of who mapped their own individual rate.
Right. Yes, and next month you'll see J's as well.
And the teacher sets that individual rate?
No, math sets that rate.
Statistics do.
Yep, so if you are in a really low RIB band, the algorithm they have set, you're going to have a much higher goal. So like that student we saw, she did have a RIB goal of twenty points. Where a lot of students only have a RIB goal of five, six points. But the lower you are in your RIB band, the higher your goal will be set.
Yep. Because when we take a look at, you know, when we really start the diagnosis, and we do this every fall, it's to say, hey, when we take a look at who gained the four or five, because when we take a look at some of our eighth graders in the area of literacy, they're typically zero-two. Compared to our second grader who's a little lower, who's weak, so they're typically zero-twenty-five. So that's why the higher up you go, the more intentionally, more difficult it is to, to achieve that too as well.
And the content stops, they say that their content caps out at mid-year eleventh grade. So those students that are in the really high RIB ranges, they are getting certain content that as high as the test will go is mid-year eleventh grade. So those are some of the different things that they might come across. And we have students sometimes that will say, I've never seen this before. And so we encourage our students and help them understand it's finding your ceiling, it's finding your cap. But that's as high as it possibly will go, just so you guys have a frame of reference for that.
Thank you. Brenda?
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much.
Sure.
Mike, thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Mark.
A lot for your input.
Lot there.
Yeah, thanks.
There's a lot going on there. Nope, that's it.
No.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, we're out of good business and we got the twenty, fifteen, sixteen dollar review.
Brian, thanks for hanging tight. All right, go ahead, Sheri.
I would like to introduce Mr. Brian McEnnek. And he is a partner with the firm of Riley Penner and Benton, who is our auditors. So they recently completed our financial statement audit as of the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. And the board has requested Mr. McEnnek to come and talk about our financial statements. And overall, the audit was a clean audit. None of the statements needed to be modified. And every audit does contain some recommendations. And with that, we've been working to make those changes to what we currently do. And we just really appreciate you being here today.
All right, thanks Sheri. I'll just kind of hit the highlights as I have in the past. Issue an unmodified opinion, which is a cleaning opinion, which is what you're looking for in your financial statements. Some of the financial results, you had an increase in your general fund balance this year of one hundred sixty-four thousand. Your fund balance as of June thirtieth, you have non-inspectable, which is funds that you prepaid for the next year. That was at eight thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Then this year you have some assigned fund balance of one hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred. This is money that you set aside for, for specific projects that are gonna take place in the current year. So you kind of set those funds aside for that purpose. Then we have unassigned fund balance of two million five hundred and seventeen thousand. So your total fund balance at the end of the year was at two million six hundred and fifty-four thousand, up from two million four eighty-nine the year before. Your general fund expenditures, this is funds ten twenty-seven, total for the year, we're at nine million four hundred and two thousand, which were down from nine million five hundred and ninety-one thousand the year before. Some of the general fund budgetary information, which is made up of fund ten twenty-seven for expenditures. In fund ten, you budgeted eight million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. You actually spent eight million one hundred and sixty-two thousand. So you spent ninety-five percent of your budgeted expenses for fund ten. For fund twenty-seven, you budgeted one million three forty-two. The actual expenditures were one million two thirty-nine. So you expended ninety-two percent of your fund, uh, your expenses for fund twenty-seven. Revenues, you budgeted nine million three hundred and nine thousand for fund ten. Your actual revenue was nine million three hundred and four thousand. So you received ninety-nine point nine four percent of your budgeted revenue. And then for fund twenty-seven, you budgeted four hundred and twenty-four thousand. Your actual revenue was four hundred and four, four hundred and forty thousand. So you received one hundred and three point seven two percent of your budgeted revenue. So that's pretty much, you, you expended less than you budgeted and your revenue was pretty much actually a little above what you, you budgeted. So that's the reason for the increase in your fund balance. Then we have our debt activity. This year you had payments on your general obligation debt of four hundred and thirty thousand with interest payments of fifty-five thousand. And as of the, as of six-thirty of two thousand sixteen, the total outstanding debt was at nine hundred and fifteen thousand. And then your, this year you did not have any short-term borrowing when you had it the year before. So that means that you're, you're actually not needing that short-term borrowing to pay salaries and expenses, so. And as your fund balance increases, there will be less and less that you have to use a, a short-term borrowing. Then we have our OPEP. This year, your actual accrued liability was at a hundred and fifty thousand. Your annual required contribution was ten thousand and your actual contributions made were at twenty, twenty-five thousand. And then your stipend, your actual accrued liability actually dropped from one million two eighty-three down to five hundred and sixty thousand. This is because you, in the past, you had sixteen employees that were eligible and now you have four employees that are, are currently eligible. And then there will be some changes next year. We kind of say it in our management letter and the audit report with new Gazges coming out. One is, will be adopted next year. So your actual report has to be updated for your stipends. Then we, for Gazby seventy-three, then Gazby seventy-five is for the OPEP the following year. But we can really adopt that. So I recommended that you have, well, because it was a dime a dollar to update all of them. So at one time, so I recommend just updating so we could, I had early adopt Gazby seventy-five for next year as well, so. Then we have our single audit findings. We do a state single audit. There was one finding that we had, excuse me. You're supposed to have certification pages signed by the school district clerk. And we were not able to find one of those cert, or actually, I think it was two of the certification pages that we could not find. So you're just have those on file in the district office that they then like put the signature on. So subsequently, I think those have been received. But it's important that you make sure, because in our audit procedures, we're required to test that. So that's why we have a finding on that. So going forward, I'm sure you'll have those on file. And then we have, we have reported in the management letter and in the audit report, significant deficiencies. The one is the same one we have every year, that's preparation of financial statements. The complete audit report is the responsibility of the district. The only thing we're really supposed to do is put our opinion on. So we actually prepare the, the financial statements, the audit report for the, for you and you review it. So that, in the course of gap, that, that's a significant deficiency because you don't have someone capable of having an audit report with all the required disclosures. Pretty much, I would assume that probably ninety, ninety-plus percent of the districts in the state have that finding. And that additional one that we have this year is for journal entries. There were quite a few, I think there were thirty-one journal entries that were made from the time we started the audit until the end. And some of those were proposed by the district after we started. Some of them were proposed by us or we had items that weren't done. So one of the, the things I met with Ron and Sheri a couple of weeks ago, and bank statements weren't reconciled when we got out here. That's one of the biggest things that I stressed with Sheri, that make sure those bank statements are reconciled on a monthly basis. Because if you're gonna have problems, it's gonna just keep on going and you're not gonna know it until we come out and do an audit. So Sheri is working on catching up on those bank reconciliations. There are other items that, that we have in our management letter saying that there are no standard, like journal entries weren't being approved. And we recommend that, I think you guys created a list of journal entries that need to be done on a monthly basis. A lot of them are, will help with your reconciling at month end. We kind of went through everything that needs to be reconciled. So this was new for this year. So hopefully, going forward, we won't have this issue because this is where districts can get in trouble because things aren't being reconciled and so forth. So Sheri's working on it. I have faith in her that this will be done. So everything was eventually done at audit time, but it, it, the whole audit process took a little longer this year because things were not being reconciled, so. Another thing that we came across and that we have in the management letter is credit card receipts. You should have credit card receipts for pretty much every, everything on the credit card. There were items missing. So if someone can't turn in their credit card receipts, we recommend taking their credit card away and doing a reimbursement for them because then they will be able to turn the receipt in. So it's, it's just making sure that you have those controls in place and you're following those because that's where, where things can happen, so.
You heard it here, I can feel it.
Yes, and then also we noted cash receipts weren't being deposited on a timely basis. I know a lot of the things are going, get electronically transferred into your statement from EPI. But there are checks from time to time that come in. If you, I recommend setting a dollar amount that if a big deposit comes in, you take it to the bank mid-week. Otherwise, if they're all smaller deposits, you can take them once a week on a Friday. But I recommend stamping them for deposit only when you receive them, keeping them in a locked box or drawer. So a lot of these things that we brought up have been subsequently fixed, I think, the majority of things. So hopefully, this year will be better. But we had some concerns and I feel that when we, we met last week, I feel comfortable that things will be turned around and so, and they have been, so.
We do also have an independent individual firm, Robert W. Baird, coming out to making sure, double-checking the work that's being done too as well, to making sure that our bank statements are right on. So using another independent audit firm to, to be able to do that too as well, to help us correct some of these things to get Sheri on the right foot because there was a lot of things that she had to correct right away. And we thank Sheri for that.
Right.
Thank you.
And we're not able to do, like a lot of those things because it jeopardizes our independence. So we always recommend that you bring in a third party to do a lot of that. And that, that's why a lot of the entries were, we just kind of said it when we came out that cash isn't reconciled. We can't go reconcile their cash because it's more harder than our own work. So that's why there were, a lot of those journal entries were you guys made after the fact before we, we proposed journal entries, so.
Couple of things, the increase in revenue last year was as we way exceeded our open enrollment in. The amount of kids that we thought that we anticipated losing were not in grade two as well. So that's why when we talked about the increased revenue, that was straight from basically open enrollment. Is where those came from too. The extreme drop-off in retirees, obviously, in two thousand and eleven, we had a tremendous amount of employees retire. It's been five years now, they've fallen off, hence moving forward, we only have four. We grabbed, obviously, this evening, we will have three more going on, some OPEP liabilities. But we will make sure that Fund Seventy-Three gets trained down at the appropriate time because this, our last three retirees, they would be the last three that we have a debt obligation. I shouldn't say last one, we've got one over here yet, that we have an obligation to. So, but we are making sure because Fund Seventy-Three can only be used for retirees. So we'll make sure that we spend every one of those pennies on retirees.
For journal entries that were made, were there any that you would consider of material nature or were we just moving?
There were some, either like the, some receivables that weren't recorded at year end. So some of them were actually, some of them were getting large, I think. I don't have a list looking in front of me, I can get you a list. They will actually, do you recall any of the larger ones? I know like the, the cash we had to adjust, we had to record a receivable, I think the largest one's like fifty, is that? Were it forty thousand? There was one entry that I know that was for forty-some thousand. I scanned them tonight, I don't recall.
On a deposit?
It was.
A journal entry?
Yeah, I, I can get a list for you guys of all the journal entries that were made, so.
We're on top of it now.
Yeah.
Of course, the, with the article in the newspaper this weekend, how does that happen? That, you know, I guess we look to the audit firm that would identify whether there were anything that severe going on in our district.
Well, I think.
If you're not aware, West Alice, West Alice School District lost seventeen and a half million dollars over about a five-year period where they basically ran their fund balance from a fairly sizable number down to negative counts.
Yeah. I can, I really don't wanna comment on that. But it.
It's not your burden.
Well, I was working with them for a while. A lot, some of their, their, and everything was reported in their audit report. So they could see that they had a four million dollar deficit one year. And the board, their, the board management should have gone into it. They were in the same boat, they were reconciling bank accounts. So it's, it's, that is the biggest thing is the, you have to look at your audit report. We reported that you guys had a surplus this year, which is great. You guys do your budgeting, you guys look at what accounts you're over, under budgeted. That wasn't being done with that district. It said that in the article that they were overspending in many different areas. And that's, it's part of the monitoring year. And you wanna make sure you have up-to-date financial information so you can make those decisions on how much you have left to spend and revenue that's coming in to make sure you're recording the revenue on a monthly basis that for, for the grants that you expended the money, you wanna recognize the revenue in that same period. Because otherwise, your financial statements are skewed. So it's, it's having those procedures in place and making sure, making sure that they're being completed. During an audit, we test deep, make sure your cash is balanced, that, like all your balance accounts hasn't changed yet. We don't look at, make sure that they're being done every month because we're just auditing the balance as a time, or a date and time. But it's, it's, the, the big thing is you have to make sure that you have management in place that is doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Right, and we do meet with, through the finance committee, we do give quarterly updates as it relates to budget spend in each of the accounts. We, we lasted that in December as well too. So obviously, we've, we've increased our fund balance and this upcoming year, we're gonna be decreasing it because of some of the increases. So we try to be as transparent as possible with you guys.
Right, and with, that, they budgeted for a four million dollar deficit after they had a four million dollar deficit already. So you have, budgeting is huge and you wanna make sure that you're not overexpending. You guys, you guys follow that, so.
Yep, we're pretty concerned. Thank you, Brian.
All right.
For your firm's work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a question on, for crossing transportation. Do you wanna answer some of those?
Do you want to question there? Sure, a couple of things. One is, is in reference to a few of the comments that Stephanie made. First of all, North Lake has their policies, they bus everybody. Okay, so for an open enrollee to enter into North Lake, they can get to a stop. And I'm sure it's, it's not an issue because they don't have a paid ride, they don't have a policy. A lot of that depends on where their school's located. You take a look at where their residents lie, I think that's, you know, and just the buses go by or when you take a look at the hazardous roadway because Highway V V in which the school lies on is considered hazardous. That is a hazardous roadway because there's no sidewalks there or anything else like that. Hence, that makes that a hazardous roadway. So North Lake's a little bit unique from that standpoint too as well.
Yeah, but they effectively have to bus everybody.
They have to bus everybody. Richmond busses everybody as well. They're our school districts who choose to. I mean, it is a, it is a decision from our school district standpoint. From our school district standpoint, we take a look at where our residents lie. Fifty-five percent of our residents live outside of two miles. That was this, this past year. Fifty-five percent, which means forty-five percent live within the shell of, of that two miles. And I have attached to the, the board documents, Stephanie, I think I, I'm not sure myself. This is the usually hazardous roadway plans. Stephanie had emailed those, because in there I colored for you. But basically highlights the areas in which is, is within the two miles, and kind of go from there. I just really want to, so in the Hartland situation, every school district is unique about where they would, whether daycare or not. We do have a policy that allows open enrollees to participate in the pay-to-ride program. Because if we only would, I would assume that, at least I would like to enforce that, our policy says if you live outside of two miles. Our open enrollees live outside of two miles. And so they would then, we do have several that get to a stop, whether it be for childcare reasons or for a family member. And they do participate in the pay-to-ride program. Just wanted to kind of recap a few things as it relates to where the board has been as it relates to a lot of the concerns, or some of the concerns about either Bark River and/or the totality of the two mile in our busing policy as it relates to board policy. For who is eligible for busing and who is not. I know that Stephanie was involved last year too as well. We had the policy committee, both Phil and Jenny Hughes at the time. We met twice, once on 3/14 and another time on April 11th, to specifically look at the policy. And to determine, is our policy in line with what the board wants to do? Okay, because they took a look at it, it was regarding pay-to-ride. And the specific issue was, is if a bus is available and going by students who are not eligible, because of the way the layout for Bark River, some people are eligible, some people are not. And we had a discussion as a full board, twice, once in March and once in April, as it relates to, do we want to do something with the policy? And at the time, the board said, no. The policy committee's recommendation was to maintain the policy that given the Bark River, or given north of the Bark River Estates, the new subdivisions, or with the bridge, that that policy would hold and that the, the board was backing that. So when we take a look at what has changed since then, I guess that's, that's for the board to consider, whether or not they want to have further discussion as it relates to the circumstances of Bark River, or looking at the busing policy again, which would be, if the board wants to take a look at the busing policy, I recommend that you take a look at it in totality and not just make it a Bark River crossing issue. Because it is unique, there could be times where we don't go into Bark River crossing. Based on demographics, you know, bus routes and things like that. So it, it's not something that you would be able to commit to. What we talked about last time too as well, was is, okay, you still need to have room for the kids on the bus. And what the pay-to-ride program does is, is the students who are within that two miles, they are able to secure a spot on the bus by paying for it, paying for that service. The response from the policy committee was to kick it to the finance committee, where I do believe it was Randy and Amy discussed it and decided to move the pay-to-ride fee to go from a per pupil rate, which in the past years has been well over three hundred dollars, three hundred sixty-two, three hundred eighty-four, to a flat fee of a hundred dollars one way for the entire year. Or two hundred dollars for the entire school year. So we have about a hundred and seventy-nine school days, so it is approximately a little over a dollar a day. Both ways to transport your child to and from school, to secure your spot on that bus. Because in Bark River, we do have up to thirty, thirty-five students who are not eligible. And those students then, we would have to make room on that bus. The route that goes through Bark River right now has assignment of eighty-six kids, is assigned to that route right now.
And at the time, the thing we were looking at was just the cost of riding the bus, because that, that pay-to-ride program existed. And the issue was a matter of cost, that if the bus is already there, I should, you know, why would you have to pay for it? And so that's why we went the direction we did, to look at, oh, you know, three hundred dollars is that reasonable? We went and did a study, you know, and talked with, you got information from the surrounding school districts as to, you know, do they have pay-to-ride? What do they cost? And that's, you know, how it ended up in the finance, you know, the, the finance committee to determine a new number.
And we are the only school district who sets a flat fee and does not make it the per pupil rate. Because I think some of them, there was one school that charged a thousand dollars, because that's what the per pupil rate was, given their, their transportation costs. As we take a look at that too as well, so.
Refresh my memories, two hundred for one student, and then what's our?
The cap was. Five hundred? Five hundred, thank you, Steph. Five hundred, the cap was five hundred, so more than five hundred from that standpoint too. The open enrollment situations, you know, it's, it's difficult, and I'm not familiar with the family for the transportation reason. But I know there was a family in Bark River who ended up open enrolling their students to swallow. I had a personal conversation or personal communication with the father, and it was because they were looking to relocate into that school district. So I, I don't know, because with a, with a student, when a family open enrolls out, who's a current, and we don't know the reason, I do reach out to them to find out why, why it is. I've done that on a, since, since 2011. And I know, and I'm not sure, the family who you spoke to who went to Northlake, but I've spoken to a lot of families who opened enroll from the Northlake, right around that 2010, 2011 time period. And it was based around what was happening in the school district at the time. And I, I probably talked to well over fifty, fifty-five families at the time, and I didn't hear of the transportation being one issue. I heard start time was an issue very, very largely, hence the reason why we went for the early start program and well, Sheriff Shott's not in that. No, it's not, I got a letter from.
You were supposed to go to the legislature.
Yeah, well, there, we're working on that with the start date, one thing at a time there. So, so when we think of open enrollment, in order to open enroll your family, you have to transport them. And one of the things that we do take a look at, for the families where there is a bus nearby, and Bark River is the only subdivision where we happen to have a bus that would go through. Even when we take a look at some of our new construction, and we take a look at, you know, whether things are unusually hazardous based on construction, and as soon as that settles down, all of those new constructions would be well within the two miles as well too. So Bark River is unique, as stated in the letter. The, the board does have the opportunity to do what they, they choose to with the recommendations. Waukesha County back in 2009 has stated, and we've been operating since 2009, that Bark River is safe for children to walk in. Either it's during the day or going to school, that's what Waukesha County has told us. And that is what we have been operating on since 2009 with that decision. So, I guess the, the board can, can decide to do what it, what it wants to. But when we, when we think about what has changed in the, the letter from the Bark River residents, you know, the, the bars were there, the crossing guards, intersections. If there is a dog problem, let us know about it, and I, I haven't heard of a, of an angry dog along the walkway. That is an issue to address with the village then, and the local sheriff's department. But when we think of unusually hazardous areas, the way unusually hazardous is, is is this unique, is a dog unique to, a, a, a dangerous dog, unique to just the Bark River route? Or is it on a different route? When we take a look at the sidewalks, when we take a look at the amount of streets they cross or driveways, sidewalks. We have one sidewalk in the village, that's down Main Street. And yet we have many, many subdivisions that are walkers, forty-five percent of our kids qualify from that standpoint too. So, I, I understand their, their concern, the elements, lack of law enforcement and things like that. But I guess, when we take a look at those things, the sheriff's department has not deemed it unsafe or unusually hazardous in some other location in their jurisdiction.
How many studies did they do for everybody?
They did two, they did two.
And how many years apart were they, or?
One was in 2009, and I'd have to go back in some of the notes when we took a look at 2000. They were very, very close, because the original one was challenged by the, by the residents. And then, so a new deputy did it, and the same, same outcome conclusion was. Because if that was deemed unsafe, we would be busing those kids. So, so please make very, very clear that if, any point, that there is an unusually safe, because we bus a lot of kids who are within two miles. We do, because it's deemed unusually hazardous. And we follow the sheriff's discretion. So, those are some of my points that I want to bring to the board as it relates to the specific issue of the busing in Bark River, because that's what we're talking about.
I guess, I don't really feel good about making a policy that's specific to one subset of people. That seems wrong. You know, like, making a policy specific for Bark River doesn't seem like the right thing to do. Because if you're doing that, then you're effectively discriminating against everyone who doesn't live in that subdivision. I don't necessarily disagree with the desire to have more kids ride the bus. I think if you want to pursue something that, you know, we should probably, to me, we either leave it the way it is, or we bus everyone. And that's a big decision to make, and you know, that probably involves a community workshop or something like that. Because that's really going to come down to a, a much greater cost burden for the district and probably a referendum to cover those recurring operating costs, if we wanted to go down that route. No pun intended. So I, that's kind of my thought, and I don't.
What I think I'm looking forward is, here is whether we as a board want to address this again. Because if we're going to address this issue again, we're going to do it in a workshop type of performance, not during a board meeting. And so, but if, if there's no desire to go down this path and go over it again, we need to know here, at this meeting, whether we want to pursue changing policy. And I think it's, it would probably be looking at the total policy, and reviewing that again, and so.
I would be in favor of that.
Having a workshop?
Having a workshop, but it'd be, it'd be more than.
It wouldn't be a workshop to talk about busing Bark River. It would be a workshop talking about what's the overall busing policy, right?
But it, it would be inclusive of, of that, the issues that were on board to us. But if you think that we're just going to rehash what we've done in the past, then we'd make that decision here, not going further. But if we decide that we want to revisit this, then we do it in a meeting.
Well, it seems like this comes up every so many years, you know, and it's always kind of the same thing.
We're less than a year off from the last five months.
The last time it was Woodland Ridge, wasn't it?
It was this, it was this.
It was the time before that.
The time before that, the time before that was Woodland Ridge, because that's when we took a look at Woodland Ridge and said, it is not, I believe it is not unusually hazardous. We conducted another study, the sheriff's department said, you're right, it's not unusually hazardous. So busing was removed from that subdivision.
Yeah, that's something we were talking about, the piles of snow and.
But I agree with what Phil said about, we can't just do something for Bark River, because I don't think that would be fair either. What other subdivisions, they look at Bark River, and why are they getting this and we're not?
Well, just like you said, I mean, right now it just so happens that there's a bus that goes through there.
And then it all changed because it's always fluid.
Right now we have eighty-six kids, and I just had a conversation with the bus company again last Thursday? Last week, Thursday or Friday, about how do we consolidate? How do we eliminate, go from eight routes to seven routes? And that's their task.
What's the capacity of the bus?
Uh, it depends, they do have eighty, well, this was before, they got new buses now. I don't know what the new ones, but before they used to be eighty-three. Eighty-three and seventy-five, seventy-seven as well, that was what their fleet had before. Now we've got a bunch of shiny new UXs, so I'm not quite sure what they are right now. But when we take a look at it, what Randy has is our most recent ridership. I know I shared this with you, and Stephanie gave us most recent information for you too as well. Here's the, the ridership counts from a couple of weeks ago, February. So the number assigned, and this that, and the other thing, and the bus company is always tasked and understanding, you'll see, oh, one route only has thirty-nine. Well, where do those thirty-nine students do live, and I can't tell you, or maybe Mike and Jay know. Route three, where does that go? You guys read that? Those kids behave on that bus. Don't ride that one. But, you know, so this was, it just had the same conversation with Arrowhead, as well as the Delsman. We talked about travel times, and about getting kids from point A to point B from the entire consortium. I mean, had a conversation again about 4K, we have two PM 4K routes. Well, that's because when we drop our other kids, one goes way this way, the other one goes way that way. If there was only one bus, they would be late, just because of the routes and where they go in 4K slowly. Because you have to wait for somebody to come get them and things like that too. But it is one thing that is a very, very high priority, because we start to talk about all of our budgets being tightened. Increases of health insurance of ten percent, fuel costs, this that. We want them to cut a bus, which means there's more riders, because it's going to be longer bus times possibly, et cetera, et cetera. That too, so. What do you think, Keith?
I, I'm thinking it's, I know Katie is, she was very similar to yours, Phil, in ways, she would, I think what she said in there, if there was a bus in the subdivision, she wouldn't be opposed to picking up everybody.
Picking up everybody.
And that would be a change in the policy.
Katie was, because, just so you know, we did take, I know Amy and I and Katie went out, took Dean around. Phil, you're familiar with it from last time, and Amy, I know you are too as well. But we did spend significant time going through the entire district of the unusually hazardous, the non-unusually hazardous areas, to kind of showcase that too. So we have spent a lot of time as a board looking at this too as well. So just wanted to make sure that everybody, this isn't just something that was really needed. But yeah, Katie would be, Katie did reach out to me too and say, hey, she would consider looking at something that would be, if the bus is there, space, would be an option for people to sit on.
I hope for us to contest, whether we want to pursue it any further, talk about it. Or do you want to say, well, we rehash this over in the past, and we would be, could use our time to just go back and redo what we've already done, and not have any mindset to go ahead and make any changes.
In the recent past, we, well, last year, right, we, we've looked at it from a, you know, policy committee, finance committee, kind of in a small group, but we haven't gotten, we haven't had a community workshop to talk with the community in the recent past at least.
No, we just did it as a full board. We did it at a board meeting.
Yeah.
Two board meetings.
Correct.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we didn't have a, a separate discussion about it. So, you know, I, I think it would be valuable, because obviously there is some need from the community, right? That's, that's kind of why we're here. So whether it's, we do ultimately decide to do something specific for Bark River, or if we decide to leave it alone, or if we decide to entirely change the policy, I think that's, you know, something that as a community, obviously, they want us to look at.
I wouldn't be opposed to that, I think that might be a good idea, just to feed that from the community and see, maybe the policy does need to be changed, so we're not doing this every few years.
It's a, I agree with Phil of that, I, I, it's either a change that affects everyone, or a change that affects no one.
Right.
Right, and that, that's why I said, though this issue is here, it would be looking at the whole policy and not.
Bark River is not so unique, and Woodland Ridge has drifting and no sidewalks and ninety-degree blind turn. And my neighborhood has a downhill ninety-degree blind turn with snow drifting, and you know, so it's, it's not unique.
Danger's about it.
Yes. Yes. So, I think it really becomes a question of, do we really entertain busing everyone, or do we still have the policy that we have?
Or do we change the parameters from two miles to a mile and a half?
You can judge me.
But I wouldn't see a benefit in that.
Then it's gonna, then...
Yeah, they may be exposed.
Then in a couple of years, people that are one point four miles are going to have the same issue, right? Oh, I'm on, just across the street.
The same argument's going to be, is would you allow your four-year-old to go out one mile? Or two miles?
Yeah, that's...
Across the street.
I think, because when you start to take a look at those unique hazards that are highlighted in the letter, those are found in almost every subdivision.
See, I...
Outside of the box, the bars we have.
I look at it from a historical, what was the reason for the yellow school bus?
To plus the, our kids...
If you get the kids that were not coming to school at all, because they didn't have transportation to get into the country, into the town schools, and that's where the yellow school bus started.
Well, I mean, that, but in cities, that, I mean, there was other public transportation or whatever.
There was other public transportation, yeah.
And we're, I mean, one could argue that we're getting closer to that situation, right? You needed some other public transportation other than walking, because there's wild cart and buggies going around the streets, I'm not historical, we're getting here. But these other dangers in our situation now.
I look at it from a historical, I, I think, from what I've heard here, I don't want to spend much more time, because I'm going out of two hour meeting, that totally devotes me. We need to set up a time to do a workshop, and then we can have conversations back and forth with citizens, and it won't keep us, you know, if we schedule every board meeting, it creates an issue where we don't get our normal housekeeping thing done in proper time, so.
Okay. We'll set up a time, we'll, I know Katie's not here, but we'll, Dean, you and I will work, and then we'll kick someone out, so we get some consensus with the board.
Okay, discuss regarding sick time allocations.
I had mentioned this, and I wanted it on the agenda, I was just kind of curious about what our policy was on the sick time and sick leave, and all that with everything going on, and the budgets, and I'm seeing the Arrowhead referendum come up, and I had questioned, well, what do they do, you know, money-wise, and that type of thing, and I had talked to Ron, and Ron at least provided us with a list of what the other districts do, and their policies and stuff, and I think our policy is pretty much similar to what everyone else is doing. But I still wanted to mention this, because I think further down the road, we might want to look at something as times get tighter, and budgets get harder. But right now, you know, I did ask Ron too, how many days off per school year do teachers have? And it's not a real vacation, but with the Christmas and spring break and other things like that, seventeen days off by the school year. And there, we also have ten sick days per school year, and three personal days. And I know when I first started on the board, and we, Act Ten came into being, we had looked at this, but we didn't do much with it, it kind of slipped by the wayside, because we were dealing with the health insurance and the retirement, and that I thought was kind of a full plate at the time.
I would say, Amy, that when we take a look at the former collective bargaining agreement, it was seventeen sick days.
Oh, I didn't remember that.
It was seventeen sick days prior to 2011, and it was three personal days.
Okay, so we did reduce some...
Right, it was three personal days.
And more accumulated.
And more accumulated, correct, yeah, you could accumulate up to ninety, okay? Now, what happened in 2011, after Act Ten, we took seventeen down to ten, first of all, we didn't take any days away from anybody, okay? All of our staff was able to keep their accrued sick time. What happened was, is we went from the ninety cap to sixty, and why did we put sixty? Sixty was a safe number to make sure that that got you to long-term disability, okay? That's where that sixty number came in. But we went from seventeen days to ten, three personal down to two personal, actually. Now, two years later, we added three days to the teacher contract, okay? That's when we added back, three days, gave one personal day back for that. So, we have made some adjustments, and that would have been back in, oh, 2013, I think, when that happened, so we did shift a lot. And those individuals who have over sixty sick days did not accrue any more sick time. They warped it all the way down until they hit sixty, and then as soon as it went down below sixty, then the following year, they would replenish back up to ten, so.
Okay. So, I was just thinking, you know, that should times get really tight, or whatever, we might want to address this in the future. And I think that, you know, ten sick days per school year is a lot, I don't know of other places in the private sector that have quite that many, including the three personal days. But the way I was looking at this was, you know, anyone who's currently at Merton, a teacher, would keep, they'd be grandfathered, and keep whatever we have now, but in the future, maybe reduce the amount of time you can roll over, or, you know, go from instead of the sixty days down to thirty that you can roll over, or something like that, just have it, and maybe reduce, reduce some of the sick days, maybe give an incentive that if you're not sick, you know, at the end of your school year, you'll get such and such amount, just to ensure that you're in the classroom more, because we always talk about, we prefer to see the teachers in front of the classroom rather than homesick, or, you know, not in front of those kids. So, I just wanted to bring it to the board and see what everyone else thought, and, you know, all the feeder schools and Arrowhead all seem similar, but I think eventually someone's going to have to take the first step and maybe address some of this, because when people find out that, you know, this is quite a high amount of sick days, in my opinion, and personal days, and then including the seventeen days off per school year, and then the summer, you know, it's a lot, in my opinion.
It does look like a lot, and I understand.
Well, it is, but it's, they're effectively paid hourly. I mean, right, I mean, it's not like we're paying them for time they're not working here, as opposed to like a normal full-year salary employee, you get...
Those days that they're off, they're not being compensated for.
Right.
Yes, they're not being compensated, the week of Christmas, there is no compensation. We just divide their contract, divide it by a hundred ninety-five days, and then we put it out over twenty-four. I guess a couple of things, Amy, one of the things that, when we take a look at our business, the, we're different, a little different than PTO, you know, the paid time off, I think you're referring to, the sick leave bank, in an ideal world, is their short-term disability policy. That is what we really want them to use it for. I know you did ask me for how many sick days everybody used up until from September first to February third. The average teacher has used three.
Right.
That was the average. Then I took out maternity leaves, NFLA, the average teacher, some people, you know, used eight, some people used point five, some people used zero, and that, I shouldn't say that, that's just the people who use sick time. We actually have two minus, we have sixty-six employees, this probably encompasses forty-eight of them, so we have fourteen people who haven't taken a sick day yet. So, the average would even go down even lower. So, that's one thing we do look at, and we take a look at AESOP and run some of those trends as well. You know, because when you think of PTO, Phil, you and I had this conversation, in the private sector, during the Christmas times, it gets really bleak in the office, right? Because everybody uses that PTO.
Use it or lose it?
Use it or lose it. And if we wanted to get to something like that, where if you use it, we don't want, or either use it, or, we don't want, we don't want them to use it, we really, really don't. But then they also don't want to lose it, so.
But you have people going paying out or something.
Paying out, then you start talking about, do you want to put something into an HSA? Do you want to get, you know, because then you can start to really take a look at, because thirty days will probably get you to long-term disability, not forty-five, because it's a sixty-day, we have a sixty-day policy, or insurance policy, and that encompasses probably forty-five workdays probably, so that's kind of that sweet spot of forty-five. Or not to say, some school districts just say, offer a short-term disability policy, and they, you know, set risk with reward, so.
The other, sorry, the other thing I didn't want to forget to say, in terms of ten being a lot of sick days, you know, this is also a little bit different than working in an office, because this is working with a room full of twenty kids who don't wipe their noses or wash their hands.
You work in a hospital, and that's more dangerous, that's where my husband works.
Sure, but...
If I were to get sick, I'd just go around my grandchildren.
It's not a normal office job, and so there isn't, you know, is ten the right number? I don't know, but it seems logical from that standpoint, that it's more than what you might typically see in an accounting firm, or whatever, you know, whatever the normal adult world would be in the private sector.
I agree with that, Phil. I don't like the idea of giving, instead of not use sick days, because if somebody's sick, I don't want them here spreading what they got around. And some people, because of having that carrot out there, that they can take in all those days at the end of the year of compensation for not using the sick days, I'd rather not have to have that setup and come to work when they're really sick.
And it is good to note too, I think last year, we had nine individuals who we paid their personal days out for, or they were given three, they didn't use all of them, because you can roll up to another one, and this, that, and the other thing too, so there, we don't have, our staff aren't even using personal days at times, because there is an incentive, there's a hundred dollar incentive not to use your personal day, and we get nine individuals.
That's probably the highest, and so, but what you shared, there's nobody using our...
I, well, we, if we did, I mean, we do run AESOP reports, we get, you know, daily updates from Stephanie and things like that, but we do see a lot of, our high-end users have children who've been sick, and they know that we're watching, and we get doctor's notes more than we ever have about, hey, I was at the doctor, my kids were at the doctor as well too, because for our people, we're not afraid to say, hey, show us a doctor's note, okay, then they produce one, they go to the doctors, so. We are a little bit unique, and like Amy did mention, though, we're not out of whack either way, you know, crazy low, crazy high, we are right in the middle, pretty much, when you take a look at what other school districts are offering their employees too as well.
Well, I just thought it was something to mention for future consideration, if you want to take any action here or anything like that.
Okay, then, we've got Dee under new interest discussion regarding creating a school board curriculum committee?
Yeah, I guess this was kind of my instigation. We had a, I guess it was actually during Ron's review, we talked a little bit about curriculum, because that's one of his tasks, and I started thinking about that a little bit more, in that, you know, the board as a whole, you know, we have these subcommittees that kind of, we focus in on some of the more important jobs that we're supposed to be doing, right? Monitoring finance, the facilities, things like that. And really, when it comes right down to it, curriculum and student achievement is really why we're all here, right? So, would it make sense to have more board representation in that process, both from a, you know, reporting standpoint, you know, and oversight, and whatever else, and honestly, just having people who aren't in the trenches every day be part of that process, and have a little bit of insight, you know, from outside, from the outside world. So, I guess I wanted to start the conversation around, do we want to have a committee geared towards curriculum and student achievement?
And that's something new here, we have curriculum committees. And I tried to think when we actually had that disbanded from the board member, board member being part of it, because I remember being part of it years ago.
Never had one in ours.
It's been a long time since...
Right. Phil and I had a nice conversation about it today too, and it was, you know, continuous improvement, data, you know, some of the things that Brenda and Mike were talking about, you know, and kind of filtering through some things, that's, whether it meets, or it meets quarterly, monthly, they get invited to the curriculum meetings, you know, right now we're in social studies, next year's going to be math, I'm not opposed to it, if there's a desire from the board, if, you know, what we call it, continuous, I would call it continuous improvement, because I think it would be, it would fall underneath student achievement, student data, as well as that curriculum aspect too as well. I've got no problem with it, if we reorganize, if we wanted to make a motion to start up a continuous improvement, whatever we want to call it, at that moment, we reorg in April, that would be just fine with that, if there's a strong desire on the board.
I think it's a very good idea, I'm not sure that limiting it just to the board is necessarily the best approach. You know, there may be, there may be a parent, you know, a handful of parents in the district that would probably be far more qualified, to be involved than maybe some of us.
There's a couple, when you think of a district curriculum committee, or continuous improvement, typically what occurs with those is, in a K-12 state, that's really where you see a lot of them, is that's where you really, it looks at not only the curriculum adoption, the science adoption, you know, the math adoption, but ultimately your course offerings. What are you missing? What are you adding? This is where we think of from a middle school level, from our lens, is there a course that we need, we want to bring in that we're missing, or a desire, or like, hey, nobody wants this course? We pretty much kind of do that internally right now, because it's an elective, it's truly optional. But from a district standpoint, usually it's, hey, do you want to okay this new art class? Do you want to okay this new STEM class, this foods class, this English class?
It could be a whole new course, it could just be a topic area that we think is missing in our existing course, or it could be, we think we need to do more communications and speech skills, right? Because we don't think, we're struggling with that, you know, so it could just be adding on to some of our existing curriculum.
I mean, it can be, we can get, you know, you can have community representatives, it's kind of like our human growth and development committee, you know, you have different representation, and then it meets, and you have an agenda, and you talk about things, and then the administration gets tasked with, and staff gets tasked with either, you know, going and doing some action steps, some action items, or collecting information, or, I mean, there's a lot of different things that can happen on that.
We chub us everyone?
To be effective, though, it's probably the highest commitment committee that a person can be on, I think.
Well, our curriculum meets, if you want to be part of the math curriculum, well, Phil was part of a lot of those, it's once a month, it really, really is, it meets during the day with our staff, not to say you couldn't create a branch of that, that would meet, you know, once a month, or every other month, whatever you wanted to, as a kind of a community group, and you just kind of ask for people to...